Heavenly Father, this time, we pray that come and speak to us, oh Lord. Speak to us, oh Lord. Help us make a decision for your work, oh Lord. Teach us these hour in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
God is good and all the time. Okay, at this time, I want to welcome all of you to this Bible study session. Let's concentrate. And because it's Bible study, there's room for question and maybe comment. So my name is Kiptum Lagad. So at this time, I'm going to welcome our speaker to take up. Be blessed.
Happy Sabbath once more. Happy day. Yes, indeed, it's a happy Sabbath. And this time, we are having a Bible study. Bible study is a session where everybody can contribute, where we ask questions, we comment, and we view out what we think, so that we might sharpen each other like iron. So I like to sing, even though I'm not a very good singer. There is a song called "Sauti". Sauti yang gu badoi na gu fu, na weza kutanga za injili. Najuwa wakati utafika sitaweza imbate na. Perhaps a good singer can come and help us sing that song. Emma, Emma Siara, you can help us sing the song, or anybody who knows the song. Who knows the song? Who knows the song? Or Job, Job, you can come and help us. You know, at this time, we are still energetic. We still have the voice to proclaim the message to the world. There's a time coming when we shall not have the energy again. So Job shall go and sing the song.
I can sing all along. Sauti yang gu badoi na gu fu, na weza kutanga za injili. Najuwa wakati utafika sitaweza imbate na. Sauti yang gu badoi na gu fu. Na weza kutanga za injili. Najuwa wakati utafika sitaweza imbate na. Najuwa wakati utapofika ntana mazakimya. Sauti yang gu itatoeka nita porudimafumbini. Sitaweza zekunya mazakimya. Sauti yang gu badoi na gu fu. Najuwa wakati utapofika ntana mazakimya. Sauti yang gu itatoeka nita porudimafumbini. Nita weza zekunya mazakimya. Sauti yang gu badoi na gu fu. Miyaka yatuni ya kukopecha twa ishikwa ne ma boana. Nitaficha zetalanda yang gu. Nitahuliso na boana. Miyaka yang gu niya kukopecha na ishikwa ne ma boana. Nitaficha zetalanda yang gu nitahuliso na boana. Najuwa wakati utapofika ntana mazakimya. Sauti yang gu itatoeka nita porudimafumbini. Nita weza zekunya mazakimya. Sauti yang gu badoi na gu fu. Najuwa wakati utapofika ntana mazakimya. Sauti yang gu itatoeka nita porudimafumbini. Nita weza zekunya mazakimya. Sauti yang gu badoi na gu fu.
Amen. That song tells us, right now, when we still have energy, we should not stay at our comfort zone. We should go and spread this message. We should go and spread this message. The book Deserve Ages, page 194, paragraph 3 and 4. We can read that, Deserve Ages, page 194, paragraph 3 and 4. Who's already there? DA 193.3.
So the Thessus, in the temple at Jerusalem, Allah will separate the outer court from all other persons of the settled building. Upon this wall were scriptures in different languages, stating that none but Jews were allowed to pass this boundary. A Gentile presumed to enter the inner enclosure, he would have disgraced the temple and would have paid the penalty with his life. But Thessus, the originator of the temple, and it is service to do the Gentiles to him by the tire of human sympathy, while his defining class plotted them the salvation which the Jews rejected.
There was a time when we could not receive this message. A Gentile could pay with death if they could enter the temple, but now the message is open to everyone. We can read dot four.
Says, "The stay of Jesus in Samaria was designed to be a blessing to his disciples, who were still under the influence of Jewish bigotry. They felt that loyalty to their own nation required them to cherish enmity towards the Samaritans. They wondered at the conduct of Jesus. They could not refuse to follow his example. And during the two days in Samaria, fidelity to him kept their prejudices under control. Yet in the hearts they were unconsciled. They were slow to learn that their contempt and hatred must give place to pity and sympathy. But after the Lord's ascension, his lessons came back to them with a new meaning. After the outpulling of the Holy Spirit, they recalled the Savior's look. It swaths the respect and tenderness of his bearing toward these despised strangers. When Peter went to preach in Samaria, he poured the same spirit into his own work. When John was called to address us and Smilner, he remembered the experience at Shechem and was filled with gratitude to the divine teacher, who, foreseeing the difficulties they must meet, had given them help in his own example."
Jesus' example is what leads us into ministering. The disciples of Jesus learnt from him, and they went spreading the message with the same character that Jesus portrayed. And we who are called to service are also called to go according to the character of Jesus. We are to take this message with the care and love that Jesus showed. We find an incident of the woman at Samaria. This woman, when Jesus reached her, Jesus did not go to her and preach to her, but Jesus cared for her needs. What did this woman need? This woman needed water. But Jesus provided more than just water. Jesus provide a water that if you get, you'll thirst no more. From the book Ministry of Healing, we are told Jesus was a medical missionary. This is telling us a critical part in how we conduct our missions, how we spread the gospel. Jesus through medical missionary brought very many people to them, to the light. As we go there to spread the message, the most part of it first is first to tend to the needs of these people. First of all, let these people feel the love of Jesus before we even give them the message. This does a great role to pull these people to God. You cannot go to someone out there who is hungry and now start telling them, "Jesus loves you. You know God saves, God does everything", yet you have the ability to even give this person just food to eat, and that can open the door for you to minister to this person. In our ministry, we are called to do it with actions also. James tells us, faith without actions is dead. How do we manifest our faith to the people out there? As we go preaching to them, God is love, yes, that is the message. But now can we show this love to them, so that they be eager even to know this God who is love? Many people out there have shut their ears to the message, not because we can't preach the message to them, but because the methods we use to reach them don't appeal to them. Jesus, the way he used to go around, he used to go around healing the people, he used to go around providing for the needs of the people, and now people followed him because of the first thing he did to them, which was first, tending to their physical needs. As we go out there to spread the message, not only going, but also around us. We have people around us who need help. If we can help these people, show them the love of Christ, then they shall be eager to even hear this message. Let us now read from the book of Matthew, chapter 28, verse 19 and 20. This is the great commission we are being told.
Matthew 28, verse 18 to 26. "And Jesus came and spoke unto them, saying, All power is given unto me in heaven and in earth. They go ye therefore and teach all nations, baptizing them the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Ghost, teaching them to observe all things whatsoever have commanded you and law, and with you always, even unto the end of the world." Amen.
So Jesus is saying all power is given to him. And can we also receive this same power that Jesus had to speak to the people and bring them to the light? We read from Acts, chapter 1, verse 8. "It's a promise to us that power shall be given unto us." Acts, chapter 1, verse 8.
Acts, chapter 1, verse 8. The Bible says, "But ye shall see power after that the Holy Ghost is come upon you, and you shall be witnesses unto me, put in Jerusalem and in all over there and in Samaria, and unto the utmost part of the earth."
The same same power that Christ had to minister is now given unto us who receive this message, when the Holy Spirit comes upon us, to minister first unto Jerusalem. Where's the Jerusalem? We can say that in our case here, Jerusalem can be that neighbor of yours around you, that friend of yours very close to you, that is your Jerusalem, that is where you start your message, your ministering. Now, after you minister unto Jerusalem, you can go to Samaria and unto the end of the world. We are not being called just to go for missions out there and minister, but as we live with our neighbors, with our friends around us, we are also to minister unto them. And the best way to minister unto these people is not even talking to them about the scriptures, is through our characters. If they can see Christ in us, then they shall be drawn to Christ, and they shall come, because actions speak louder than words. If we be of good service to these people by our good actions which portray Christ to them, then these people shall be very eager to come to this Christ we are worshiping. 2 Timothy, chapter 4 and 2, is telling us to be ready to preach the gospel all the time. 2 Timothy, chapter 4, verse 2. "We, the watchmen on the walls of Zion, we are being told to be awake all the time, in all seasons. Let us be ready to preach the gospel."
2 Timothy, verse 2, says, "Preach the word, be instant in season. Out of season, the proof, the book, exhort, exhort with all long-servant and doctrine."
So at no point are we told to lay down our guard. In all seasons, we should be ready to proclaim Christ. In all seasons, we should be ready to show the world Christ we are worshiping. In all seasons, let us be portraying Christ to the world. This is a call to us with the remnant. In the book of Advent, AA 9.1, AA 9.1, we can read that one. Acts of Apostles, 9.1.
It says, "The church is God's appointed agency for the salvation of men. It was organized for service, and its mission is to carry the gospel to the world. From the beginning, it has been God's plan that through His church shall be reflected to the world His fullness and insufficiency. The members of the church, those whom He has called out of darkness into His marvelous light, are to show forth His glory. The church is the repository of the riches of the grace of Christ, and through the church will eventually be made manifest even to the principalities and powers in every places, the final and the full display of the love of God."
So it is the responsibility of the church, the remnant, the light bearers, to proclaim this message to the world. It is not the responsibility of any other person but we who have been called out of darkness to proclaim this message to the people. And as we've been told, we should be ready to preach this message in and out of season. At all times, we should be ready. Let us read from the book, John, chapter 9, verse 4. We know that we are living at a times where there's a lot of peace, I can say, compared to the times ahead, where there's great tribulation coming. And at this time, where everything seems so smooth right now, this is the time we should give much earnest into the work. This is the time that we should be spreading the message with full force. I can say that. John, chapter 9, verse 4, says, "I must work the works of Him that sent me while it is day; the night cometh, when no man can work." I must work the works of Him who has sent me while it is day. At this time, we can say it is day, the night is coming where man can work. The night is coming where man shall work no more. At this time, where we are still in the day, let us work the works of Him who has sent us. Then we shall read, I can give an example of charcoal. Whenever you are using a charcoal stove, jiko, the only way to keep the fire burning is adding more charcoal. The only way to keep the fire burning, atakamona tumia gas, nilazima kuena, gas kwa yo mtungi yako. The fire cannot keep burning if you are not adding in more. So the same same applies to the church or us. We as Christians, if we cannot go ministering so that more people come into the light, then we are a dead church. If we can not go to minister so that people receive this light, then we are a dead church. Charcoal can only keep burning if you keep adding in more charcoal. The same same applies to our spirituality. We can only grow spiritually if we keep growing from the fountain of living waters, which is Christ, and also we keep spreading this message to others who are still in the darkness. In Joshua, chapter 2, we read about Rahab. How much had Rahab known about God? So this is a question to the class. We say that this is a Bible study and we all participate. How much had Rahab known about God? Ikokuwa lesson here this time. Rahab alikuwa amejuwa kuuso mungu kia sigani. Anyone with an answer? Nikikuona unawangiya mta kuchagua. Rahab alikuwa amejuwa kuuso mungu kia sigani. Had Rahab read the Bible, alikuwa amesoma SOP. Mwuo. Yes, Rahab had just heard the stories. Nahab ana sema kuamba, their nation had been, I don't know, I can't get the exact word used there, that they were, is it amazed by the great God of Israel, what he had done? And through just that, a little she had heard, she believed, and she was used by God to save the Israelites. This woman at the well, had Christ preached to her the message, the woman at the well. How much did she know about God? Just a little. But this woman at the well, we are being told that through her, many people at Samaria came to Jesus through her. And now, how much do I know about God? How much do you know about God compared to these people? God uses us in our sinful ways to proclaim His message. That we read in the book of Acts of Apostles, chapter 3, page 330, chapter 330.2. I'm almost winding up, so we should be preparing our questions, our comments, and additions.
Acts of Apostles, 330.2, says, "We have this treasure. The apostle continued, 'In art and faceless, and the excellence of the power may be of God and not of us.' God could have proclaimed his truth through sinless angels, but this is not his plan. He chooses human beings, men conversed with infamity, as instruments in the working out of his designs. The priceless treasure is placed in art and faceless. Through men, his blessings are to be conferred to the world. Through them, his glory is to shine, fought into the darkness of sin. In loving ministry, they are to meet the sinful and the needy and lead them to the cross. And in all their work, they are to ask life, glory, honor, and praise to Him who is above all and over all.'"
God does not discriminate us in our sinful nature. If God could be going for those people who seem likely may be perfect in His eyes to proclaim His message, then God could not have used this woman at the well. God could not have used Rahab. God could not have used those old characters in the Bible whom we read of and know that these people may be. They were not seen as the right people in the eyes of men. But God only requires of us obedience to use us for His work. God does not look at you how wealthy you are, how much you have read of the scriptures, how much you've been committed to the church services. As long as you are willing and obey Him, God Himself shall begin a good work in you. This commitment to Him comes from Him. All we need is to arm ourselves in, how we arm ourselves for the mission is found in Ephesians, chapter 6, verse 10 to 19. And all of this is coming from God. What God requires of us is just the will and obedience to Him. We can read that one as we prepare our questions and comments.
Ephesians, chapter 6, verse 10 to 19.
So we shall be reading one verse at a time.
It says, "Finally, my brethren, be strong in the Lord and the power of His might."
Finally, my brethren?
Be strong in the Lord and in the power of His might.
Be strong in the Lord. This strength is not coming from our own abilities. Be strong in the Lord and the power of His might. 11.
Verse 11 says, "Put on the whole armor of God, and ye may be able to stand against the wiles of the devil."
The ability to stand against the wiles of the devil is not through our own understanding, is not through our own wisdom, but through the armor of God. The ability to overcome the evil does not come from our own understanding or our own wisdom, but only comes from the whole armor of God. And this armor we get through trusting in God and delighting in Him. Verse 12.
Verse 12 says, "For wills are not against fresh oil blood and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places."
What we are fighting against is not flesh. So the ability to fight against all these principles of the darkness can only come from God, through His Holy Spirit, who is bestowed in us to teach us and to guide us to do all righteousness. Verse 14.
Verse 13 says, "Therefore, therefore, take unto you the whole armor of God, that you may be able to withstand in the evil day, and having done all to stand."
This armor of God is what gives us the power to withstand the evil day. And having done all to stand. We can attain power only through the will of God. We can attain the power only through the will of God. And He is the one who prepares to stand against the evil. 14.
14 says, "Stand therefore, having your loins cut about with truth, and having on the breastplate of righteousness."
Having your loins, having your waist with truth, having put on the breastplate of righteousness. If you read more in the scriptures, you'll find out that the truth being spoken about is the law of God. The law of God is truth. And the breastplate of righteousness. God's righteousness is- God's righteousness is what sanctifies us and prepares to stand against the evil so that we may proclaim him in all the world. Verse fifteen?
Fifteen says, "And your feet showed with the preparation of the gospel of peace."
Your feet, having, having showed your feet with the preparation of the gospel of peace. The gospel is what prepares us to go. So as we prepare to go, let us be readers of the word. To find the word of God, what does it tell us? What does it proclaim to us? What does it assign us to do? We find it through the gospel of peace. The gospel of Christ is found in his holy scriptures. Chapter sixteen, verse sixteen?
Verse sixteen says, "Above all, taking the shield of faith, with which you shall be able to quench all the fearful doubts of the wicked."
Above all, taking the shield of faith, with which you will be able to quench all the fiery doubts of the wicked one. Through faith in God. We know that by our own powers we cannot overcome evil, but we need faith in God. Only through faith in him can we overcome the wicked. And the faith is Through faith, we believe that God shall take us to that mission and we shall do his work, right? Verse seventeen?
Verse seventeen says, "And take the helmet of salvation and the sword of the Spirit, which is the word of God."
Take the helmet of salvation. How does salvation come? How does salvation come? Antaka mto uko nyuma ajibu sasa. How do we receive our salvation? How do we receive our salvation? Kuna, kunamto ameka kando ya bed hapo? Sharon? How do we receive our salvation? Nana exalency ni kamaunajibu? Yeah, we, we receive our salvation through the blood of Jesus Christ, Samuel? Yeah, so maybe, maybe kunamto anasikia iso terms for the first time. Amesema justification, sanctification, glorification. Nani ajuiyo ninini? Or nani anajuiyo ninini? Hey, I can see a few hands. So maybe Samuel, you, you can elaborate for those who don't know what is sanctification, justification and glorification. Yeah, yani simply justification, we don't deserve it, but God is giving us, giving it to us. Yeah, so simply sanctification, yotunazai pata, is it in Matthew twenty-eight? Is it twenty, teaching them to? Kuafunza kuyashika iyo teniliya wa amuru. Teaching them to observe all the time? Tunesa open here verse, maybe na quote mamboyango. Matthew twenty-eight, twenty.
The Bible says, "Teaching them to observe all things whatsoever. I have commanded you, and Lord, I am with you always, even unto the end of the world."
So hapo evo inezakwena simplify now that sanctification. You are being sanctified, you are moving closer and closer to God, day in, day out. Yes, so glorification shall happen at the second coming of Jesus Christ. The one you hear, we shall be given new bodies. We shall be given new bodies. That is now when glorification shall happen. Now we can continue the next verse.
Verse eighteen says, "Praying always with all prayer and supplication in the spirit, and watching thereunto with all perseverance and supplication to all sins."
A very important thing to arm us to stand against the powers of the evil is prayer. Praying always with all prayer and supplication in the spirit, being watchful to this end with all perseverance and supplication for all the saints. Prayer is the most important thing in life of a Christian. In all this to prepare us to stand against the evil, we ought to pray a lot. Jesus himself was God, but he used to pray a lot. Jesus, we know that Jesus, some things Jesus did so that to give us the way. Jesus says, "I am the way, the truth and light." Nobody comes to the Father exempt through. So what Jesus was doing was giving us the way. Jesus was praying and fasting, not because he had been Si kuamba alikua amepungukiwa, iila niko kua kotupa sisi infano akofuata. Prayer is the most important thing in life of a Christian. It's like a fuel unto a car. Prayer, very important. Next verse?
Nineteen says, "And for me, that utterance may be given unto me, that I may open my mouth boldly to make known the mystery of the gospel."
So you see, there is some things coming before now opening our mouth to speak. There is the armour of salvation, there is faith. Twendeleku zitaja, tuliongele faith, tukongele salvation, righteousness, truth, mesau prayer. Yeah, prayer also sindio. So all those things are now to prepare us. And now, now after all these things are preparing us now, "And for me, that utterance may be given to me, that I may open my mouth boldly to make known the mystery of the gospel." Before we open our mouths to make known the mystery of the gospel, there is those things that are to prepare us. There is prayer, there is God's righteousness, there is God's sanctification, faith, having faith in God. You cannot go to preach to someone, something you yourself don't believe in, right? So we should have faith in whom we are going to proclaim to the world. And now we can open our mouths boldly to proclaim the mystery of the gospel. Verse twenty?
"For which I am an ambassador in bonds, but therein I may speak boldly as I ought to speak."
So after all these, now we are ambassadors. All these things into consideration, God is giving us to prepare us so that we can be ambassadors for Christ unto the world. So that we can preach this message from Jerusalem, Samaria, Judea, unto the end of the world. So that we can open our mouths boldly to proclaim the mystery of the gospel. So we can, anyone with a question? I think I'm done. Anyone with a question? Question, questions, comments, additions? Yeah, I can see one. Job two, so Emmanuel one, Job two, Danekan three, Eldamangha four, Biko five. So I think as others think of their questions and comments, we can start with Emmanuel. So the mic can pass around?
Okay, thank you so much. I want to give some comment about what you, we have learned today throughout the scripture. I want just to remind us that the mission is entrusted to both genders. It means both men and what? And women. And no one is limited to this, this duty or sense of responsibility. You know, most of the time, we ignore God's message just because we don't trust the vessel which God has used. For example, when you read through the Bible, when after Jesus was raised, he saw Mary Magdalene, isn't it? She was a woman and she told her that, "Go and tell Peter and my disciple to go and meet me at Galilee, because I have what? I have risen." While Peter and John, their beloved and loving disciple, had the message, what did they do? Instead of going to Galilee, where did they go? They went to the tomb, isn't it? They ran to the, to the tomb. So sometimes we ignore the God's voice just because we think the vessel which has been used is not according to our what? Our expectation. So I was trying to remove this assumption that we have had for a long time. Even for example, the L and G White books. Most of us, they haven't read it and they don't want it just because they think L and G White is a what? Is a woman, so they ignore the message. While you, when you read through the, the L and G White messages, you will find good points and there are many authors like Dr. Luther and many, John, John who showed on us, I don't know, Wycliffe, many. So this, this intolerance to women that we think when God uses women, that is not God, but God can only use men. For example, you know men, when you read through the scripture and the Bible says that men, only men should read in worship sessions by raising their only hands. That one, many will believe that, you're a man. But when the Bible said that a man cannot live with food alone, iyo watasema, you're both genders. So sometime you are being surprised that men believe that God doesn't use women specifically. When you read through the Bible, the last time, the Bible said that the daughters and your son will what? Will dream dreams and will prophesy. And through the scripture, even L and G White explained that at the end, the spirit of Elijah which was being spoken are we, that we individually, we are going to return the arts of the children of God to his what? To his father, just like Elijah did, just like John did. So that is our responsibility for each and every one of us. That no one should try to tolerate or ignore any woman or think that they are giving them some sense of privilege. But it is a responsibility that God has given us with his annul, un, annulable. And I know there are some two verses that sometime you try to use, but if you try to start them much deeper, those words that Paul used. That's why it is important to ask questions, which I always do. If you learn through it deeper, you will never intolerate woman gos, gospel because you think that the vessel which God is using, it is not according to expectation. Otherwise, thank you so much and thanks for your time and for, thanks for listening. Thank you.
So simply put, the message is not to be taken by prejudice. The message is for all of us. How many times have you said, you're an elders? Yeah, we hear it a lot, sindio. You're near reformers, who are these reformers? Did this message come to all of us or specific people? Prejudice should not be found among us.
Thank you. Someone taking it that it is prejudice. Tanda nyumbani utakutawa tukuakua ni kinama ma wengi, na kinababa akwa. How do you take it? My question, I have a question and a comment. Someone may be taking the example of Rahab and other one taking the example of the Samarian woman. And say that all ask this way, will this person continue in the steps? Yes, all she is. Because those people, they encountered Christ. Ah, finally, they encountered Christ. Should we continue in our sinful steps? Ah, all in our nature of doing deeds which are contrary to the will of God. So that the time we shall meet with Christ is the time we shall start with the gospel? It's a question.
Question, hope, who has an answer? Yeah, Emilio has an answer. Who, who else is responding to that question? So Emilio then, Eldabiko, then Isaiah.
God is good for the time. Where is Christ? Okay, Christ is inside, but where is Christ according to the Bible? Christ is in heaven, right? Yeah, we have a high priest, that is the book of Hebrews. Like, yeah, when we, when we get the information about Christ, it doesn't mean that we continue staying in the manners that he was. The woman at the well met Christ at God's time. We, we have met Christ in different ways. But it doesn't mean that Ugoje ileta imenyutakuja kuambiwa mntumisha mungu kuamba, now this is the time. No, we have different times. Klokuzetu azifanani. Kunayamwingine maybe, let me not say that. But where the book of Romans chapter five is telling us, Zamani zaujinga wetu. Mungu hakuiya esabu. But now we know the truth. God counts. God is putting that into your account and you'll be accountable for that. So when you get the information about Christ, that, that you continue staying in that way, you have, you have to react according to the action force that was given to you. Thank you.
Yes, happy Sabbath. Be not deceived, God is not mocked. So God searches the hearts and he knows quite well. If we, someone mentioned about the steps of salvation. And if someone chooses to remain in the same state they are, then I don't know what about. We said sanctification is a daily process. So are you growing? We are the same people singing, "I would be like Jesus. Teach me, Lord, to daily grow more and more like Jesus." That should be the life of a Christian. And just as my brother mentioned, God has not called, called us to be dwarfs. He wants us to grow day by day. And if we choose deliberately not to grow, then I think these things were written for admonition and examples. If these people got it in the first, like at that point, what of you who got it earlier? You sit back and relax. That will be considered indolence and if you read in the book Last Day Events, somewhere you will get that, "May the Lord give no rest, day or night, to them that are indolent." So once we have the message, it should not be that we remain stagnant. That's the point.
Isaiah?
I will support what my brother Emilio and what Elda said. It is true. If you had message like Rahab and a woman by the well and you remain there, then it means you remain stagnant. That means you are not growing. That means there is no change in you. Then it means the truth is not in you. So that you know the truth, but you are not practicing it. So after receiving it, then live by it. Allow me to read a quote in the book biography. It reads, "Every soul in every conference, in every part of the Lord's fine heart, has the privilege of knowing the truth. Listen to what now is coming, it tells us. But but truth is not truth to those who do not practice it. Truth is only truth to you when you live it in daily life, showing the world that those people must showing the world that those people must be or are at last saved." So after knowing the truth, then you must live by it. You are not supposed to live and say that, say no.
It is better that we don't have the message than get the message and ignore it.
Thank you. Let me make my comment. Never and never should we compare ourselves with these people. When you look the surrounding of Lahab, they were three what? Their messages as rumors. So when you read in that book of Joshua chapter 3, 111, the same one, so they had no chance of encountering with these people to do what? To exalt more or consult about the rumors they were hearing. But for us, we have a chance to consult and get to understand these things. Second point, on the case of the Samaritan woman, that woman I encounter, she was timing the time when other women are not at the well. She's coming to the well to fetch water. So I encounter, let's say perhaps it was at night when these women are at the homes and is meeting now with these men. My statement, all my comments for the session we having, I'll comment on the steps of salvation. There are three. Justification is for the entire world. Justification is for entire world. Whether you are like Rahab, whether you are a thief, whether you are a witch, all of us have been justified. That's why even the sunshine God provides unto us equally. Sanctification is for those who have made their steps and accepted Christ as their personal Savior. And this is true about the same. This has told in the Corinthians that unless you're born again, you cannot do what? You cannot see the kingdom of God. And these people now comes in the statement which Elda says that our sanctification, all sanctification is a daily process of examining ourselves. So that at that coming of Christ the second time in the book of his first Corinthians chapter 15 says that, the first 115 says that in a twinkling of an eye, we shall be done what? All of us will not die, but those who will be found, the righteous living will be changed. And this body will save a body which will do what? Which will not lot and which will not experience death. And that time will get what we call glorification. So for all these steps, they are essential for each and every one of us. Justification, all of us has been accounted for it. So the path we are in is sanctification. A question to ask ourselves, are you part in the journey or in this vehicle carrying those who are in the sanctification process? Thank you.
To whom more is given, more is required. If these people are saved by just hearing rumors, what about us who have heard this message?
Happy Sabbath. Happy day. Mine is a comment. Jesus said in John chapter 14 verse 6, "I am the way, the life and the truth, and no one comment into the Father except by me." And also John chapter 1 verse 4 and 5 says, "In him was life, and the life was the light of men; and the light shinet in the darkness, and darkness comprehended it not." Jesus came to seek and to save the lost. And Jesus was sent by God and Jesus confirmed himself saying, "As thou have sent me, if and so I have sent them into the world." That is John chapter 17 verse 18. And Jesus sent us, sent us like his disciples saying, "Go ye therefore into the world, teaching them and baptizing them in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, and teaching them to observe all the things whatsoever I have commanded you." That is 28 verse 18, 19 and 20 of Matthew. The theme of our mission is, what is the theme of our mission? Rise and proclaim Christ. When we shall arise and proclaim Christ, we shall be the heirs of the promise. And the promise is, "Thy light shall no more go down, neth thy shall dim moon withdraw itself; for the Lord is thine everlasting light." So the Lord is our everlasting light. And it also continues says that, "And the days of thy mourning shall be ended." This is Isaiah chapter 60 verse 20. So our path is to say, "Here I am, O Lord, send me," as Isaiah says. Thank you and have a blessed day.
God is good. All the time, the Lord is good. I'm also going to comment something very special and very crucial to all of us. When you look about the ministry of Jesus Christ, in fact, he was doing a lot of miracles. But when you try to analyze the miracles which Jesus Christ did, there are some of the miracles which he did are healing the people. If you read your Bible clearly, you will see that most of the miracles which he did were healing. When you read about the book, Medico missionary, it is telling us something. And it has come to this moment that we are as the Adventists. We are also ignoring the message, that is the message of Medico missionary. In fact, it was saying that the Medico missionary will be unentering words. Because if you see the miracles Jesus Christ which he was doing, let's take an example. See, he did the miracles, the miracle of feeding the 5,000 people, send you. So the first thing which we should be able as all of us, this one should prepare us not only to the mission, but all of us should know that we are disciples. The same book which my brothers read and we know it very well, that all of us are disciples. In fact, what we have not done to the fullest is that we do go or you minister, but you don't make a disciple for Jesus Christ. That is now where maybe I can say. Because after ministering to this person must also understand the message, then he will do what? He will go and proclaim it, proclaim. You can see the example of the Samaritan woman. After receiving the message, the message himself herself, it changed her. Then she had that energy now to go and spread it. Let me read this. They say, that is the book C M E 7.1 7.1 I can see in the Lord's providences that the Medico missionary work is to be great entering words. In fact, it is an entering words. Most of the people whom have gone even to the missionaries, you can see that the people come because they see, "When I go there, I will be done what? I will be helped." So Medico missionary, it goes hand in hand with the gospel evangelism. We should never ignore that one. When you, do you know that the Medico missionary will have a lot of therapies? That is the water therapies, hydrotherapies. In fact, I was surprised to see that they are more than 100, of which I know like 75 of them. And this all, they can be able to heal some of the diseases. Those are the things people are to take this message to them. First, you must do what? You must know their need. The same book, Medico missionary, it is saying us that Jesus method alone will do what? Yes, it will bring the souls. Because it will be able to identify that Mahanga is not feeling well. It's not feeling well. You feed that person, after feeding him, then you can be able to feed him with the gospel. And that one, I believe that it will be 100% transformation. Because you can be able to convince, you can be able to convince such people. We have given this, this one, in fact, it can take you even. Of course, we have the two classes, that is the poor and also the rich. But I want to tell you that when you have this message, it can take you anywhere. That is in the rich homes and also in the villages. In fact, when I was reading also this, it has said that we have neglected entering some of the cities where the rich people go. And do you know that who are suffering more, are the poor or the rich? The rich people are suffering more than even the poor. That class has a lot of diseases. And maybe it can come in terms of what? Of the lifestyle. When you go there with some of the, like some of the remedies, it is very simple that this person will follow Jesus after telling him that if you take this, it will help you. So it's upon all of us as we are going to take this message, even our parents or our relatives, that we should understand the message, Medico missionary, because it will open the gates. Then your message will be simplified. Thank you very much. May God bless all of us.
Hey, happy Sabbath. Okay. Why, why, why this message? Why mission? Why, why preach the gospel? And there are other people can do it. This message has been given to us Seventh-day Adventists to take it to the world. And Christ says in John chapter 8 verse 12, this is what he tells his disciples, "Then speak Jesus again unto them, saying, 'I am the light of the world; he that followeth me shall not walk in darkness, but shall have the light of life.'" Are we followers of Jesus Christ? Yes, we should have the light of life. That is why we are going to Matthew chapter 5 from verse 13 to 16. It says that you are the light of the world. It's not that you've, Christ has stopped being the light, but through the light of Christ, we become light. And we are called that this light, "Let your light so shine unto men, that they may see your good works and glorify your Father, which is in heaven." I want to comment. You can project evangelism, page page 119, paragraph 3. As he opens that, the work, the mission work has been entrusted especially to the Seventh-day Adventist church. If you happened to watch the G C session which just took place a month ago, who is the current president of the G C? President of G C? Okay, Nisau. But you ought to know. But basically a statement he made, this church, the Seventh-day Adventist church, is a church that is meant for mission. We are to proclaim the gospel to the world. Unfortunately, I can't read from that point. Proclamation of what? Okay, it says Seventh-day Adventists. Please help me read. If you can read there, read.
In a special sense, Seventh-day Adventists have been set in the world as a watchman and light bearers.
Thank you. You can pause. They have been set into the world as watchmen and light bearers.
To them has been entrusted the last warning for the perishing world. On them is a shining wonderful light from the world, from the world, from the word of God. They have been given a work of the most solemn import, the proclamation of the first, second, and third angel's message. There is no other work of so great importance. They are, they are to allow nothing else to absorb their attention.
Thank you. That is the work that we have as a church. And there is nothing that should absorb our attention and draw us away from that work. Nothing between me and my Savior. Then lastly, allow me read this. When we, we may be like, I think other people or in other churches, they also have this message. Do you think they have the same message we have as Adventists? Not really. I'm reading from, this is Letters and Manuscripts, volume 12, 1897. If you are typing, it's a long one. 12 LTMS LT5 1897. If you are typing, it's a long one, twelve, LTMS, LT five eighteen ninety-seven. Uh, it says souls in our world today are in need of a Savior. The Lord has given his church the opportunity to work for him. He has invited them to come to the gospel feast and to invite others to come with them. So God has invited us, uh, but he has not, is not selfish. He wants us to invite others too. Again and again, opportunities have been given for God's people to go out into the highway edges and compel those there to come in that God's house may be full. In the providence of God, there's an example given here, Dr. Kellogg has entered upon a work whereby he can organize workers to carry forward the work of bringing the truth before thousands that are now in vice and iniquity, that they may be redeemed from a life of dispo- uh, dissipation and sin. All the people of God should be interested in this work. The work of soul winning, it should be, all the people of God should be interested. But a love of ease and selfish indulgence has been shown by many. We are sorry to say that those who have had every privilege of knowing Bible truth have not brought it into the inner sanctuary of the soul. That is what someone was speaking of, just, just knowing and not practicing it. Uh, that, that is not faith, faith without actions is dead. God holds these, these who have known the Bible truth, yet have not brought it into the inner sanctuary of the soul. God holds all these accountable for their misused talents, which were entrusted to them to be improved, but which they have not returned to him in honest, uh, faithful service. So God is to hold us accountable for whatever he has given us to do his work, uh, yet we have assumed. Uh, if you read, you'll read later during your own time, in the great controversy facing life's record, that every man's work is to pass before the judgment seat. And, uh, uh, everything is noted with terrible exactness, even the misused opportunities. The wasted moments. Uh, so you can read that later and you see where you fall. May the Lord bless you, but what I can tell you, I can adjust, that mission work is a collective responsibility for all of us. And, uh, we are all to be part and parcel of it. Should we choose otherwise? Uh, at one point, you have to give an account at the end of the day. Thank you.
So we ought to be finishing up Isaiah then, I saw one hand over there. So Isaiah then, my brother over there, Patel, shall be the last one.
Happy Sabbath and happy day. Happy Sabbath.
Happy day.
Happy day.
Happy Sabbath.
Tunakaka matume choka, poleni. So I want to comment on this, perhaps there is something in your life, today in you, I am a sinner, I should not go for this mission. Then you have to pray for it. Take an example of the disciples of Jesus Christ, that is in Luke, chapter five, from verse one going downwards. They were imperfect, but Jesus chose them. So at this time, this high chance to ask that we all pray that the Lord will give us the strength to go to this mission. May communication team project for us, the book on friction courage, page two hundred and two, paragraph four. I want us to read as all, at the same time, to see that God does not call for those who are perfect or alone, but he calls everyone to his service, and he will perfect them as they work daily with them, with him. Conflict and Courage, CC, two eighty-two, paragraph four. Okay, as they are learning, allow me to read. Wa kishaw project, then mta soma. It says, he who called the fishermen's of Garali is still calling men to his service, and is just as willing and is just as willing, willing to man, to manifest his power through us, through the first disciples. However imperfect and sinful we may be, the Lord odds us odds out to us to offer a partnership with him of appreciative to Christ. Invites us to come under the divine instruction that uniting with Christ, we may work the works of God. Now Christ is calling everyone, it's the one who called the men of Garali. Is now still calling people to his service. May God bless us all.
Happy Sabbath. Happy day. Um, according to what you are talking, I'd like to say that, um, why Jesus came onto the earth is to teach about God's love. Na, kituwa, bala ilikua na fanya, aliambia, the, the, the life of the Pharisees, there were those people who would judge people. See, tunajua, there were teachers of law. Let's, tukonamualimu apa, and kaziake, nikututich about the God's commandment, but his work is judging. Na na kuambia, uko ivi, uko ivi, uko ivi, uko ivi, uko ivi. But akonyesi the way forward on how to do something. So what Jesus came, he came to teach us about love, to understand about God's love. You cannot say, unapenda, tunambua, that wazisema, unapenda, unapenda mto giraniako, if you are seeing him suffering. It may be suffering in physical, it may be suffering in spiritual. So what Jesus came to emphasize is the love of God. And you are told, if you love, if you love your neighbor, you cannot let them, eh, kuame, amepungukiwa na nini, na neno la mungu. So you'll have to go and preach to them, so that they may be able also to be what? To access information that you have about God, amen?
Happy Sabbath, happy day. Namitu aliuliza swali kuusu sasa, nikishajua hi, ninyamaze. So in the book, Testimonies for the Church, volume nine, nineteen point four, it says, so far as his opportunities extend, everyone has received, who has received the light of truth is under the same responsibility as was the prophet of Israel, to whom came the word, son of man. I have set thee a watchman unto the house of Israel. Therefore thou shalt hear the word at my mouth and warn them from me. When I say unto the wicked, oh wicked man, thou shall surely die. If thou dost not speak to warn the wicked man from his way, that wicked man shall die in his iniquity, but his blood will I require at thine hand. Nevertheless, if thou warn the wicked of his way to turn from it, if he does not turn from his way, he shall die in his iniquity, but thou shall deliver thy soul. So what is, hikitabui na tuambia ajee. It is simply saying that if you don't go, if you know and you don't go to tell the other person that, my friend, what you are doing is, is not right. This person will surely die, isn't it? But God will require his blood, will require you of his blood. You'll be judged for not taking the word to that person for knowing and keeping quiet. But if you go and tell him or her, you will have saved your soul, amen? So God is calling us to go.
So we shall be judged for whatever we did, which is wrong, and whatever we kept quiet. What, whenever we look at someone perishing and keep quiet, we shall also be judged for that. So let us rise and pray. Oh God of heaven, we come before you this particular evening, thanking you for teaching us. We thank you for the message that has passed to us, oh Lord. Now instill in us the heart to awaken unto your voice, oh Lord, that we may arise and proclaim your word to the people, oh Lord. Give us the strength to stand against evil and instill in us the spirit to guide us in each and every day, to remind us to do according to your will. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.